Okay, welcome everyone. I'm calling, it's Fred Morley, I'm calling the meeting to order. Let's move right to approval of minutes, minutes from January 19th this year. Any, any comments on the minutes? Could I have a motion to approve?
I approve, I own a councillor starter.
Thank you, second?
This is Meredith Baldwin, I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, moving on. Okay, we have no business arising. Call for conflicts of interest, any conflicts of interest around the virtual table?
Yes, this is Meredith again, I may have a perceived conflict of interest with a piece of correspondence. There was a request that came from Anne Winters from WSP on behalf of KILLUM. And Anne Winters is a member of the Board of the Ecology Action Center that I report to and am employed by. So I can recuse myself if we discuss those correspondence.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any others? Hearing none, let's, let's move on. Consideration of deferred business, I don't think we have any correspondence, we've had some correspondence that's been shared with the committee. Our procedure there is that we read it incorporated into our thinking as does staff. And we generally don't discuss correspondence at, at each meeting. Or we never get through the meeting, I don't think, so, because there's quite a lot of information that comes in. But we are, we do read it, we are expected to read it. And incorporate it into our thinking. So moving through to item eight. No information items, so let's move right into our reports. And everyone has been anxiously awaiting this one, it's, it's I guess looking at what we're going to hear, or what we've heard from the various folks in the, in the in the consultation process, and it's been underway for quite a while, an extended period because of the the challenges of COVID, and we, the normal procedures haven't obviously worked out. But there's been a certainly a robust attempt to reach out as much as possible. Who is, I imagine there's a presentation coming, who is, who is presenting the the what we heard presentation?
Good morning Chair, I believe we have Kasia on, Kasia Tota on the line to present.
Okay, great, Kasia, could you start us off, and there may be questions as, as you present, but we will try not to interrupt you every, every thirty seconds. We'll, we'll try to respect your, your flow and thinking and so on, but there may be a question that comes along as you present.
Thank you very much Fred, let me just try to share my presentations, if that works. Can everyone see that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just make sure, okay. Just minimize this, okay. Okay, well, hello everyone. Throw the chair to committee members, my name is Kasia Tota, Principal Planner with Community Policy Team and the Centre Plan Project. So very, very happy and pleased to be here today to present the results of the, as Fred mentioned, extensive communication process that started at the end of February 2020 and just concluded at the end of December of last year. So today, the outline of the presentation, as you know, you received an extensive package with a summary report, the what we heard report, as well as a number of appendices which include site-specific consultation on St Patrick's Alexandra site, all of the various survey results. Key theme tables and actual correspondence that we received up until December 31st, and we also included anything that came, came up until last week in the package as well, late correspondence as well. So today, I just want to go through the process, some of the key feedback received. Review the adoption path going forward, and happy to answer any questions. And of course, in terms of context, this is one of this probably our third major report on all we heard. When you look at the, the start of the Centre Plan process, which started based on the 2015 communication strategy and was first focused on the visioning process and the framework, the purple document in 2016. Various studies, detailed feedback in 2018 on the draft Package A policies and regulations. This was followed by adoption of Centre Plan Package A. And again, this is, I guess, our third major engagement, which is focused on the detailed policy regulations on Package B. But also included policies, regulations for the entire regional center, so it includes Package A and Package B. So there was also some, some feedback on the approved Package A documents as well. So again, our engagement process was shaped by the 2015 communication strategy approved by Regional Council. And this was followed by a 2019 Package B Engagement Plan that was presented to this committee, which outlined in more detail what kind of tools and techniques we proposed to use to seek feedback on draft Package, Package B, trying to cover various neighborhoods and stakeholders that may be affected, interested in Package B policies. This was followed, again, as we were just starting the engagement process. Of course, the pandemic was announced in March of 2020, so we revised the engagement plan to broaden our scope and to use a number of different tools and, and definitely greater emphasis on virtual engagement to, to continue to engage and extended engagement period from about three months to really eight months until December of, of, of 2020. In terms of the actual events, I think you may have seen this, this presentation, this slide in the past, but Package B was released at the end of February, presented to council, probably about a year ago actually, exactly. With the draft policies, regulations and at the end of February and until the first two weeks of March, we were able to conduct twenty, ten pop-ups in various parts of the regional center. So this was, this was, this was our way to really get out in the community and to raise awareness that Centre Plan Package B is now released and available for public feedback and consultation. It was also our intent to promote upcoming public meetings and any other engagement events. And we also received some comment cards and initial feedbacks, this was our initial opportunity to connect with community members in libraries and shopping malls, places of employment, some community centers to, to, to really get the word out, the Package B is available for comment consultation. We also were able to conduct and implement twelve stakeholder sessions with groups in established residential neighborhoods, residence groups, cultural and heritage groups. Industrial property owners, and there we actually did some, reached out through correspondence to various property owners because they haven't really been involved in Package A, in our package, package A process up to now. And also larger institutions such as universities, colleges, hospitals, and also several internal departments, which also build and operate near many institutional facilities such as community centers and libraries and our provincial department. And at that time, we actually were ready to go with eight public meetings, unfortunately, they were, they had to be canceled because at the time when social distancing measures were announced and, and we really couldn't proceed. So at that point in March, we had to regroup and have many institutions across the country and across the world. We had to really reshape our engagement process, explore new tools. And learned from other cities who were just starting to talk about at the same time how to, how to continue the engaging process, democratic process. Through new tools and, and opportunities to reach, to reach the many diverse groups, stakeholders, residents in the, in the regional center. So as you, as you recall, there were a few, few months that the CDEC meetings were also postponed as the clerk and others were learning new tools, the use of MS Teams, virtual meetings and, and the similar tools being carried out, being made available to, to staff to engage with other external stakeholders. We also took the opportunity to reshape our process by adding a number of online surveys to our tool kit. And, and of course, they were not statistically representative, there were still too many other surveys that we used. Other municipality to to provide opportunity for feedback from residents interested in particular topic or issue. But we put, I feel a lot of effort into that to use them as a educational tools to highlight some of the key policies, regulations and break it down into smaller pieces to provide opportunity for feedback, both quantitative and also qualitative. So there are many qualitative comments that we also were able to collect through that process. So in total, there were ten online surveys, plus the St Patrick's Alexandra survey, and we received a fairly good response, over sixty hundred responses to the various surveys. Correspondents kept coming in, so we were actually throughout the process, we continued to receive details of correspondence from residence groups and property owners, so at the last count, I think we had over three hundred, three hundred tracked. As we became more comfortable with the, the, the holding public virtual meetings, there were, we, we organized three three meetings specific to establish residential designation, to highlight various zones and proposed changes, various ER, ER zones, and those were attended well and also had additional viewings through YouTube on how many, because they're available, again, still available on our website and through YouTube channel. There were also virtual stakeholder meetings based on requests, and we also I believe we were, again, the first, the first group to try the Ask Me Anything session on Reddit Halifax, which which took place in the fall and also had we felt quite welcome on the platform and had some really, really great comments and questions through the process. We also had partnered with Walk and Roll Halifax to do a number of walking tours. So I can, I can speak to it at the next slide, you can see a picture from the Bullfield neighborhood here. Keeping, keeping to small groups and social distancing measures, masks. We had a number of other meetings planned, unfortunately, at the end of November, additional social distancing measures were announced, and, and those walking tours were also entrapped, that we didn't get to do as many as we were hoping to. But we continued to work with our Walk and Roll volunteers to move the walking tours into a bit of a virtual platform through their places, attractive mapping tool where community members were asked to provide comments on the map that, about the issues, the concerns, opportunities, what they liked and what was missing in their neighborhoods. And this was connected to the Walk and Roll Facebook page where our partners were posting, again, little digital walking tour stops and were highlighting some of the, some of the policies and regulations that came up during our initial walking tours and were of particular interest to community members. In addition, based on council direction at the approval of Package A, there was a more detailed and more extensive site-specific consultation process implemented for the St Patrick's Alexandra former school site to consider potential zoning changes, and this involved stakeholder meetings, two pop-ups at Northern Library, an online survey which was also available which was also which was also available in paper form, online, and and we also had a virtual public meeting for, for the community members. So in the report, we have a table to highlight some of the levels of participation in the various, in the various tools, and there was, in addition, there were some other smaller tools highlighted such as the introductory Package B video, the recorded presentation for the St Patrick's Alexandra site. And of course, the Shipy City website, we continue to enjoy really high level of traffic and viewings of applying documents, over seventy thousand visits and document downloads. And the tool also allows us to track number of people who were engaged, informed or, or aware. So in terms of participation, as outlined in the report, we heard from diverse cross-section of residents, community groups, industry and urban stakeholders. The survey tool, over almost eighty percent of participants then by, based on their protocol, lived in the regional center. Sixty-three percent worked in the regional center, forty percent owned a small business. Seventy percent owned their housing and about thirty percent either rented or lived in a call-up or were in a different housing situation. And we also had a fairly, very good cross-section of various ages participating in the surveys. And, and as you see from this chart, there was a different level of interest in the survey. So we had about five hundred survey responses on the Parks and Community Facility Survey, which really, I think, highlights the high level of interest in this topic. Followed by, this was followed by established residential areas, the Avenue Special Area down to Halifax, Entertainment District and St Patrick's Alexandra site, and our other surveys had a fewer a number of responses, but there was still, of course, a very good feedback received on the surveys as well.
Kathy, can I ask you a question, just on the survey side? Was the, the age profile in the, in the percentage of people from outside the regional center, inside the regional center, was it, was it similar for each survey? So I guess you presented the number, the overall number for all the surveys. So was there, was that number similar for all surveys, or was the, you know, were the demographics different depending on the survey, were the the level of interest from within the regional center or outside the region, was that different depending on the survey?
Yes, I think, I think it did vary, so in the appendices, we do provide information on each survey, so how, how it was different. So you're welcome to compare the numbers, but here, we just reported, reported for the overall, including St Patrick's Alexandra site, so so there were probably some, some slight changes between, between the surveys.
Okay, thanks.
Kasia, it's councillor Cattle, I'm wondering if I could ask a question about the survey as well?
Sure.
I'm just wondering, in the respondents, did you track unique respondents versus, like, I'm just wondering in terms of like the, the number of different people responding, or was it, did it tend to be the same people responding to all the surveys?
This is not, I believe, really easy for us to track, we can look at email addresses, but I think there would be differences. I think some people were interested in particular topics, so I think they would have, there would have been some different respondents, but it's the number of, we didn't do like a detailed comparison based on emails, some of them we can't track if they're referred, or they're not registered. To include, to improve access, we no longer typically require respondents to register through Shipy City to have a unique criteria, to have a unique, you know, email address. Because that was seen as a barrier in the past, so we would have taken, so we were not able to compare every, you know, source, it's, it's, it's meant to replicate, I suppose, you know, public meetings, where you have some similar people coming to public meetings and others are unique based on the, under a level of interest.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the councillor kind of reminded me of something else I was thinking of on the survey side. Just to be, just to make clear, this, the surveys that were done were not randomized surveys, right? There was, they were just anyone that wanted to could come on the website and, and test out the survey, so there's so, so there'd be, there'd be some, Sam, you know, I suppose, sampling bias there and respondent bias that would go along with that lack of random, randomization in the survey, right?
Yes, you're absolutely right, and I think we, we were careful to, to highlight that in the, in the report as well, that they were not randomized. They were really meant to provide another opportunity for access and feedback and to engage with the topic. And we tried to promote it as broadly as possible, and in a case of St Patrick's Alexandra site, it went through additional to promote it in local communities, the neighborhood. They're not randomized, they're, they're, they were intended to provide access and provide opportunity for feedbacks. There are perhaps a better term than feedback to put in a survey, but yeah.
Did we filter out any you know, anyone that might have done it multiple, done the survey multiple times, or or groups of people that might have come on and, you know, crashed the survey kind of thing? Did we, did we look, look into?
Yeah, we reviewed it, our engagement support has reviewed it, and we didn't see anything that, that seemed, that gave us duplication or multiple IP addresses. So we did our best, but we didn't see anything that looked like he was exactly the same or so, and the reserves were quite lengthy, so I think it would take a commitment to do them multiple times, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Yep.
Thanks.
And of course, in the theme tables we presented, we always said, we are balancing this feedback with other sources of feedback. So simple themes are occurring through stakeholder meetings, other correspondence, and so this is not intended to be the only, you know, the only way to, to get feedback, we, we tried to balance it with, with other, other feedbacks from other sources.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, raise that point because often people, people will see the word survey or, and they'll think, oh, it's a randomized, a public opinion survey that with its, with the proper confidence limit, limits and all that kind of stuff, and and this is not that, so it's not a, it's, it's not a it, it shouldn't be probably viewed as an accurate depiction of public opinion in any way. It's just, it's kind of a snapshot of comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr Chair, if I may, it seems like we are just at a natural break, sorry, this is Meredith. I did just have a question about the groups that we engaged with, I'm glad to see that there's a good cross-section across different ages, and I'm wondering, Kasia, if you can speak to the steps that we took to provide more meaningful engagement, specifically for groups that have faced historic and continued barriers to engaging and planning matters with the municipality?
Sure, well, thank you very much for that. So I guess, getting right off the mark, the, the pop-ups were our way to get the word out and get in the community and you know, spend some time at farmers markets, at shopping malls, libraries, at different times of day, both morning and evening to to reach to a broader audience that may have not typically been able to participate in the, in the planning process. We used our Halifax H M website and council newsletters to also promote opportunities for engagement and to get the, get the word, the word out. We worked through a number of nonprofit organizations as well to ask them to share information and to receive feedback, so I think many property owners and others, community groups then, you know, would reach out to us individually through calls or emails, and were able to follow up, and in some cases schedule an additional, an additional meeting. We also worked through our Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and African North Scotian Affairs, in particular with respect to St Patrick's Alexandra site, which has a special, you know, importance after northern community and African North Scotian communities. To, to, to first of all, design the, the process to be more inclusive and, and, you know, at the time of COVID and Black Lives Matters where it was a challenging time to, to engage, so we tried to arrange both the timing and, and the way to engage. We also reached out to stakeholders first to get advice on how to, how to design that process around St Patrick's Alexandra site. And I think this led, this led to some of us being aware of the broader Centre Plan process, and for example, we recently had conversations with the African, with the Africville Heritage, Heritage Group to ask questions about Africville, for example. So it's, 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 of course, fully acknowledging this was a difficult time to engage, and not being able to have in-person meetings has been challenging, but, but thanks to you as well to, for example, organizing meetings with H M Alliance and EAC and other groups who have access to broader, broader coalitions, I think that helped us broaden our, our reach.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Meredith, continue on, Kathy.
Okay, so the next part of the presentation is really trying to highlight some of the key feedback based on, based on designation, given there are a number of quite different designations in, in Package B, so again, these are high-level comments, a lot more details contained in the theme tables and in the and in the correspondence, also in the cover report, so this is just not intended to highlight some of the key, some of the key, key topics that we, that we, that we heard. So of course, for the Parks and Community Facility Designation, we had a very high level of interest in this topic based on the surveys and also various correspondence with residents, and we had a number of stakeholder meetings as well. With groups such as Friends of Halifax Company and others. So overall, I think, looking at packaging, Package B together, I think it's fair to say that there is a lot of value in parks and, in parks and community facilities, and during COVID-19, as we all know, the importance of those places has only been, been heightened. So there is, there is, there is a concern that, given the level of growth and anticipated growth Centre Plan, there's concern that we keep up with, of the quality and the quantity of parks and spaces in the, in the regional center, and, and there were questions about the strength of the current policies in terms of their ability to secure more parks and open spaces in the regional center. We also heard, of course, about the ability to secure more land and then concern over some of the recent sales of public lands and how, how accessibility to parks has been secured through those or managed through those. There were numerous detailed requests for increased improved facilities for specific activities and different seasons. And just for the community's information, the Parks and Community Facility Survey, we worked closely with Parks and Recreation Staff on that survey to help support the regional center parks, open space plans, there were many detailed questions about the use of parks and barriers to access what's, what, what residents' value and what may be missing. We received a lot of interest and support for additional stewardship of parks and open spaces for both play, but also for, for increased naturalized areas, and there is interest among residents and citizens to help with the stewardship of those groups and perhaps doing more to engage local residents in in managing in managing our parks and open spaces, and a lot of interest in small pocket parks as well, in some of the most densely populated neighborhoods. a lot of interest in, uh, small pocket parks as well in some of the most densely populated neighborhoods. Um, we did hear a lot of specific concerns and feedback on the, on the Halifax Common in particular, uh, in, in terms of recent changes to how the Halifax Common is used, questions about the upcoming Halifax, Halifax Common Master Plan, and also questions about potential repatriation of, um, of Halifax Common lands that may be used now for other purposes. And us, and there are, we do have policies in the central plan that where opportunities arise to, um, hopefully bring some more lands back to the Halifax Common. Um, we also heard about the lack of affordable community cultural spaces and with various developments, there, some of the community groups or, uh, small clubs and even small business owners are finding it harder and harder to find affordable space to hold meetings or to offer classes. So there is, um, I think, support for continuing to have, uh, affordable community cultural spaces as part of the bond zoning agreement. Uh, but there's also some hope that there could be a way to incorporate the spaces within developments on site, so they are available in new, uh, high-quality spaces, uh, um, for the long term. Uh, there were, of course, comments about support for ongoing water quality monitoring protection of urban lakes, and that's particularly relevant, um, in, in Dartmouth, where we the city of lakes, as we know. Uh, there were some detailed comments about some of the types and potential uses permitted within parks. Uh, as the committee is aware, we have the regional park zone and the community facilities uh, zone, uh, which, uh, the latter one, um, includes many of the schools and community facilities that are located within parks, park-like setting. Uh, but there were some comments about uses, whether there couldn't be a, a pure park zone or, um, uh, some of the uses such as spectator venues. There were questions about allowing those within, uh, the P C S O. Again, lots of support for the proposed Regional Center Parks Open Space Plan, and I think some urgency to, uh, because this is the plan that can, um, help support investment in strategic, um, uh, management of, of, of key parks. So there was a lot of, uh, I think residents were anxious to see this park come to fruition. Um, and also doing some more detailed master planning exercises in particular parks. And I think there was also aligned to that support for identifying some of the key parks such as Africville, Halifax Commons, Little Hill, as cultural landscapes. And there are lots of questions, excitement about what that could mean in terms of, um, in terms of future interpretation and, and celebrating those, those, those parks. They're also cultural landscapes. Uh, and there were also, you know, just general questions about uh, accessibility to parks, uh, enforcement of violence in parks, uh, such as for off-leash dogs and, and the availability of, uh, of services such as public washrooms and, 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 and other things for the actual parks and making them more accessible to wider, um, wider groups of residents. I think that summarizes this designation. The next designation is, um, related to downtown designation and specifically downtown Halifax, which as the committee is aware, we are uh, for the, largely pulling into center plan package, package B. Uh, so feedback here mostly came from survey, survey response, survey responses. And we had almost 100, uh, responses on this topic, uh, specific stakeholder meetings and, and of correspondence. Uh, so overall, I think the survey question answers or the feedback tools, uh, indicated that, uh, many residents are, uh, you know, really uh, appreciate what downtown Halifax has to offer in terms of feeling welcome and the vibrancy of various entertainment, uh, opportunities and, 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 and what new development uh, can bring, uh, are bringing to downtown Halifax. But we also, there were also comments about, um, you know, uh, wish to perhaps improve some of the quality of, of new developments and bringing them, um, uh, in a more predictable framework. Uh, there were some comments received, uh, about consideration for additional heights, but also comments about reducing the development pressure in downtown Halifax and related heritage protection. Uh, we also received a number of comments from stakeholders and property owners with regards to uh, the waterfront special area. So allowing for new, not just existing marine industrial uses and, and some additional flexibility within the waterfront special area around built form. Um, there were some, so, some, some correspondence suggested the need for heritage development agreements, which currently are not considered in the downtown Halifax plan and central package B. Uh, overall, I think we had a lot of support for the proposed categories of public benefits under bundle zoning, which align with central plan. Uh, but from development industry, of course, there were also questions and concerns about the new bonus on your framework, um, which will be, uh, consistent, proposed to be consistent with, with, with central plan. Uh, as the committee is aware, the current problem zoning in downtown Halifax is, uh, is fairly, fairly limited. Uh, there was also divided opinion around the adequacy of protecting heritage buildings. Uh, uh, of course, we have a number of existing and proposed heritage conservation districts, but there's also, there's still ongoing concern about the, how much we are protecting heritage in downtown Halifax. Uh, I think one of the concerns identified in the survey was around housing options and the, um, decline in affordability in downtown Halifax. Um, and from, and there, from the, the development design industry, digital questions about the cycle and approval process, how they may be changing when aligning with central plan, um, how variations will change, uh, design requirements or guidelines, and also transition policies for type on approval applications that may be, um, that may have been, um, tabled with the municipality during the central plan approval process. Uh, and overall, there was also separate way for, about the entertainment district, uh, down to Halifax, and there was high-level support uh, for this, for this idea in downtown Halifax in particular. Okay, uh, now moving on to established residential designation, which has been a, of course, a top topic, uh, topic of a detailed discussions, um, at this committee. Uh, so we received a number of detailed responses from residents. Uh, there were also stakeholder meetings early in the process and an additional, uh, follow-up meetings with residential groups. Uh, virtual meetings and walking tours for some of the key areas of feedback for this, for this designation. Uh, so overall, I think it's very much fair to say that there's a high-level support for retaining, um, for retaining the scale of established neighborhoods. Um, there's also support for retaining heritage properties and historic neighborhoods and and overall high-level support for the proposed heritage conservation districts. Uh, a few concerns around what that may mean affordability and flexibility, but overall, I think once we're able to explain the process and what maybe involves, um, there was a lot of support and, and and residents were anxious to see those before just as possible. Uh, at the same time, there was also support following more low-density housing options, uh, including townhouses, three and four unit dwellings. Uh, support for urban agriculture, in particular beekeeping and community gardens, uh, proposed under central plan. Uh, support for broadly permitting daycareers, home businesses and home occupations, and that, of course, aligns with uh, the principle of complete communities. That central plan is, uh, is going to advance. Uh, while there was support for, uh, allowing for local commercial uses in certain locations in established essential areas, um, once we were able to talk to community groups, there was also some concern that the law, current definition is a little bit too broad and, and perhaps there should be a more discretionary process uh, involved in allowing level of commercial uses so that the municipality could control specific uses and hours of operation and anything else that may be, uh, pertain to various, various uses. And as some neighborhoods felt that they were, you know, located close enough to corridors and centers that they, uh, you know, there, there was enough local commercial access to, um, those areas. Uh, but there was definitely interest in more coffee shops in, in those neighborhoods. Uh, just as the committee has discussed, there were, uh, numerous detailed questions about zone placements, um, areas that may have been abzoned or downzoned, special area rules. Uh, also, um, proposed provisions for non-conforming uses and structures. In particular, you may have multi-unit dwellings or units, um, properties within uh, established neighborhoods and how they will be treated. So, uh, as the committee is aware, staff have been looking at this in detail and doing additional analysis, um, this area. Uh, of course, digital questions about lot areas, frontages, uh, three-unit conversions, uh, irregular lots, secondary streets and backyard streets, but overall very high level of interest and support for secondary backyard streets, which have already been, uh, approved by council, but we were getting more detailed questions about the sizes and heights, um, conversions of existing garages and sheds and how they will be treated. So, uh, lots of really great feedback in this area as well. Uh, in terms of, uh, whether it's overall support for egg laying hens, there was actually, you know, some concern as well. Um, I think I spoke to commercial uses in some, in some neighborhoods. Um, uh, some concern about too much density being proposed for, uh, for, for the current areas and, uh, too much change from the existing zoning. Uh, and also concern about short-term rentals, which, uh, is a subject of a separate report directed by council.
Kathy, Kathy?
Yep.
Could I answer this? Getting an echo for some reason. Could I ask a question about, um, uh, and I guess for, for all of these, um, areas that have been looked into, uh, there, there, there's support for many measures, um, but it strikes me, some, some measures are probably some have broadly support, broad support, and some may have only been mentioned. Uh, you know, uh, i- as an example, in the established residential designation, are there, um, what are the top one or two issues that s- that seem to come up uh, in, in consultations in, in that area? The, the, um, the, the, the top one or two concerns that, that most people were, or a lot of people were focused on. Because you, you, you get, you've given us a great broad, broad brush of, of what, what everyone has, has said, but there, there were probably things that people, a lot of people were zeroed in on. Could you give, uh, one or two examples of those?
No, for sure. I, I, I think, I think that, that the overall, you know, uh, I think people value the neighborhoods and they, you know, they're, they're all put to some gentle density, but I think it's all managing how that will change the character of, of, of the areas. Uh, there was a lot of concern over affordability and allowing for, you know, small conversions, small additions to their their form and what your current, our rights are, what they may be proposed. Um, um, and I think secondary spaces and backyard suites, a lot of comments, I think, just from interested property owners to see how that could actually work and be applied to their properties. I think there was a lot of, uh, interest as well. And some questions around parking, of course, and traffic and, um, some concern about transitions from package A from the higher density developments next to their, uh, their properties. So, um, it really, I mean, if you look at the survey results, like, and, you know, recognizing they're not statistically significant, uh, I think, you know, there was probably the highest level of support for uh, making sure the character doesn't, doesn't change dramatically and heritage properties, drug neighborhoods are highly valued and uh, some concerns from some neighborhoods, like Great and Fields, around worries about, you know, encroachment from higher density devout developments. Um, uh, and perhaps a little less, but significant support for additional low-density housing options in the right locations. Uh, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Chair, just before we continue, I believe Dale had a comment.
I'm sorry, Dale, go ahead. You're still muted, Dale.
Okay, um, questions. Um, one, what would you, um, how many of the areas, and how many areas are there? How many of them were in somewhere other looked at? Um, is there any, as Fred said, the most compelling thing that people cared about? And have you made any changes because of feedback in this area as well as the level to see? I mean, it's, this is not a lot of numbers here. There were better numbers back there. So are there people being listened to? Do you think that they're being incorporated into the plan in an appropriate way? Is it worth more discussion?
Uh, thanks for the question, Dale. Uh, so a- a- absolutely. I think, I think the detailed tables in the survey results will give you a better idea of the, you know, the percent. We don't have, as you know, statistically relevant, and it will depend on the area. I think some areas uh, felt there was, was enough change proposed in other areas. It was, it was too much. So uh, as you know, as we presented to the committee in the past, we already, you know, even in the fall started doing more detailed analysis around zone placements, permitting specific zones. Um, and, and very detailed analysis of what, um, to align the zones a little closer to what exists with some, uh, with, with, with some tweaks. So I think that will be all, um, presented to committee in the staff reports. Um, and how we, how we are proposing to address, uh, some of the concerns. So to, to rebalance things and to, to address me of the, many of the detailed questions. So I would say the substantial area, you have to see, uh, some, some significant changes in the revised draft.
Good to know. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Oh, very welcome. Sorry, I'm not able to advance the slides now. I'm not sure what's happening. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, hopefully you can see it. Okay. So again, connected to the established residential is the Young Avenue Special Area, and we did have a, um, uh, a, a, a specific survey based on the initial, uh, feedback that we, we received about the proposed, uh, policies for this, for this area. We also had a meeting with, uh, residents group and there was a, we're also invited to a walking tour in this neighborhood with, um, a number of residents and historians. And of course, we received, um, uh, significant correspondence on this particular special area. Um, so overall, I think there was strong support for carrying forward, uh, with minimal changes, the, the zoning that was approved for this area, um, by council, um, the last, uh, very, in the last few years, uh, which provides for the larger lots and general setbacks and side area. Committee recalls the policies in, um, in the draft package B that, uh, potentially allow for additional internal conversions for existing buildings as well as uh, the redevelopment of the currently vacant lots in this, in this area to encourage slightly larger subdivision and, and, and more lots, I believe it was up to five units. And those two policies received, um, uh, not a lot of support in, in, in this area through the surveys and correspondence and the walking tours. Overall, I, I think we are hearing that, uh, this area, uh, for many years had the provisions to allow for uh, three to four unit conversions. Uh, and there is an interest in, uh, potentially increasing heritage, heritage registrations in this area and the possible heritage scape or proposed heritage conservation districts for this area. So, uh, we've conducted residents to our heritage staff to, to advance those conversations. Uh, and I think overall, what we heard is that, um, there's not a lot of interest in additional discretionary processes in this area and um, as much as possible maintaining the large lots, uh, setbacks and side yards. Uh, in this area, that's, that's, that seemed to be the dominant character of this area are the large inch-like dwellings. Um, not so much specific design guidelines, uh, but to ensure that the homes look like, uh, lar- large homes, even if they have, um, um, you know, the, uh, any additional units. So we definitely heard a lot of good feedback. And I think the walking tour was a really good opportunity for us to uh, walk the streets and hear the concerns and learn a lot about the history of the, of the, of the street. Okay, so moving on to institutional employment designation. Uh, we received, uh, some surveys, over fifty surveys, uh, on this topic. Uh, and, uh, we had, uh, a number of, uh, stakeholder meetings, correspondence from university owner owners, Nova Scotia Health Authority, housing Nova Scotia in some cases and other large property owners. And we also heard from other institutions and including including municipal facilities as well. So overall, there's strong support to recognition about the need and continued presence of large and small institutions in the region center, including opportunities for growth within those areas, but also intensifying existing campuses, which in some cases have extensive parking lots and which have been used to develop new buildings. While there is strong support for pedestrian oriented design as well as some bold and interesting architecture, we heard a concern that the design, the built form or design, the design of these institutional buildings needs to needs to be all different than mixed use, commercial residential buildings and additional changes may be required to the plan to provide for that and to allow for some additional additional flexibility. Detailed site specific concerns where identify some minor zoning changes, proposed maximum heights in some areas built from regulations such as tower dimensions, lot coverages, street wall heights for these buildings and design requirements to again recognize the more unique needs, you know, hospitals and also recognizing that areas such as provincial hospitals really don't need to follow municipal municipal regulations. And community centers with gyms may not always be able to have, you know, streets on every site. So we're we're definitely hurt this concerns and are working to address them. Some of the larger institutions at those universities, I think, were were actually, you know, received some positive feedback about the reduced parking requirements and the large setbacks that are currently mandated under our current regulations, but they're also supportive. I'd like to see some complementary land uses permitted such local commercial uses in those areas so they can build a better interface between the campus areas and surrounding streets. And also look having a more detailed look about the different nature of some universities, so downtown campuses, for example, versus large kind of open space. Well, that not all areas are are the same and have to have different context. We also heard some detailed feedback, particularly from the historic universities around how at small additions, renovations to existing buildings would be treated by the bylaw to make sure that they're not made too too challenging and recognizing things like some of them have kind of courtyard design, they may not they may not need to, you know, we don't need to require expensive changes to just to improve accessibility, for example. So this was this was really great feedback for us. And we also had a lot of support for the landmark building policy, which, as the committee may know, allows for some existing small scale institutions and place of worship to be able to convert to either residential or commercial uses if they maintain the the majority of the building that while the building without significant changes. But we also had some feedback around some minor additional flexibility that may be required to make it to make it work. I believe that covers this designation. Moving on to industrial employment designation. So this designation deals with some small industrial parks, such as the Woodside Duster Park, and also harbor related areas around harbor and the regional center. So we did receive some some feedback through the surveys, but we also had a number of stakeholder meetings and and letters from property owners asking questions and requesting some changes. I think, again, overall, strong agreement, recognition that industrial lands are a very important part of the regional center's economy. Agreement that they need to be protected after the regional plan from encroaching residential uses. But also some support for integration where where warranted between industrial or residential uses where possible. So integrated mixing of, for example, research and development with some residential uses. So we're definitely look at this issue and some some feedback around the border from special area. Some zone placement areas where may not be ready to be zoned quarter or higher residential that would like to maintain their more industrial, commercial status under the comm zone, for example, which, as the committee may recall, is a bit of a transition zone. Some feedback on specific uses. Some risks. We had some conversation with the Halifax Port Authority and looking at the extent to how closely new high density residential uses may come to the portlands. And also some high changes around the harbor related industrial zone where it where it's closely located cost proximity to established residential neighborhoods and what that may mean. So also great feedback and very important designation to ensure there is ongoing employment and economic recovery in the regional center. On those lines.
Cash, yeah, another perhaps another question. Related to the last one, I guess. There in in this area, there was seemed to be agreement or support in the consultation for protecting industrial lands from residential uses, but then but then on the other side of the fence, there was, you know, some folks that thought that the industrial and residential could be blended in some way. But it it you can't have it both ways, probably. So I'm just wondering where you know, where the bulk of the commentary is landing. Is 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 the biggest hotspot in this area protection from encroachment?
I would I would say so. I think we're definitely leaning towards much more towards protection and not opening up new lands for residential uses. In some cases, such as Dartmouth Co., for example, which was already identified as a future growth note in Dartmouth. That's the area we've had some conversations with Development of Scotia around that, maybe through discretionary policies to allow you know, some R and D or industrial uses through that process in a limited way and and kind of tightly controlled. In a few areas, we may be looking at existing uses and if the existing industrial use is really no longer viable, the lots are too small, we may be offered to some some some, you know, potential changes, but I think overall and you know, Ben can feel free to jump in and this will be identified in the staff report, of course, we are definitely more towards protection, especially around the harbor, which is very important.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, the last designation is the water access designation, which is applied to limited number of pre confederate water lots on the northwest arm and this has been placed for a number of years since ninety seven under the Halifax Plan and Landys Power and extending it to Lake Banuk and Lake McBack, which also have a number of these lots. So this designation is really intended to the municipality can't control infilling, that's the provincial jurisdiction. But we can control what can happen on those lands. So so essentially, the proposed policies don't allow to count the infill area towards lot coverage for essential uses, but a number of parks and community clubs in some cases, as in on Lake Banuk are permitted. And it also would allow in some cases transportation and utilities which are permitted in all other zones. So I think overall, a lot of support. Well, limited feedback, but we didn't hear many concerns, so we highlighted this number of stakeholder meetings as well. So I think just understanding this importance of this policy and feedback around the ecological protection of water bodies, limiting infill possible and 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 climate change impacts from flooding and so on. Okay, I'd like to speak now briefly about the site, St. Patrick's Alexandra. Consultation, which is an important site in the north end Halifax with significant history and and this consultation was driven by council direction during approval package B to consider potential or explore potential changes from the proposed high order essential one zone to higher order residential two zone, and this was based on the property owner feedback at the public hearing. So as I mentioned earlier, we worked closely with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion and African African Discussion Affairs to help shape the process and we also we also had the community facilitator hired to help us run the process as well, in particular, the the public meeting. Originally, they were going to be in person and we changed to a virtual format. So as I mentioned earlier, there were also stakeholder meetings, two stakeholder meetings, pop ups and a virtual meeting. And the surveys were also available in paper form at H M customer service centers and the library for a number of weeks. So we received a lot of really great feedback about about the site, about what the community envisions for the site. But also very lot of qualitative feedback. So this included feedback related to the history of the site and memories, the vision and the importance of the site to the community, in particular, African discussion committee and the Jinx Committee. Of course, we we still heard lingering disappointment that the site has been has been has been sold, but given the current context, there is support for mixed use development on the site and generally maintaining low mid rise, so up to four stories development on the site. But potentially being open to, you know, six and up to eight stories as well. If if the development is tied to some new benefits and perhaps more detailed policies for what can happen on the site, because currently the site could qualify for heritage children agreements that were extra side of the agreement just also as a right development. So I think more clarity about what could happen on the site is is what we heard about. While there is support for the maintenance of heritage, in particular, the entry cup building on the site. The overall feedback was about the need for affordable housing, culture and community space. Parks and open spaces on the site or enhancing the adjacent adjacent park and next to the site. And I think overall sort of seeing as an opportunity to build the relationships with the community to integrate development with the broader community and explore a potential community benefits. Either on the site or or investments that can be made in the immediate area to in the neighborhood. I think there were some feedback that if additional rights would be considered, that this should happen through more discretionary process with additional consultation and clarity for the community, what can happen on the site and ensure that there is a there is a connection to the surrounding surrounding area. And context, consideration of context, given that Brunswick Street is a proposed heritage conservation district and has been a historic street for for many years. But just to highlight some of the survey comments in this case, I think the greatest number of responses indicated should be no more than fourteen meters. But the next highest number was up going up to eight stories, potentially over twenty six meters, followed by up to twenty meters, which is approximately six stories. And very limited number of responses would support twelve or higher on field from the site. And here just highlighting the the most preferred public benefits, which, again, the first category, we asked this question number different ways, and I think affordable housing was always mentioned the most, followed by community cultural spaces, parks, public art, and then heritage preservation. Next, I'd like to cover. We also received a number of comments on package A and the urban design. So so this is really centered around the multi unit mixed use developments in package A. So the survey responses were not not just over thirty surveys received. But we the number of stakeholder meetings and lots of correspondence of site specific as well as detailed feedback on built form and design requirements that, given that package A has now been enforced for over a year and there is experience both internally and with external consultants and developers, we are we are hearing some good feedback about how the regulation is working so far. So first detailed site specific correspondence to be addressed by this flash report. But again, changes on potential minor high changes. On the community side, I think the community would like to see adherence to the proof plan with minimal change with respect to developers and consultants. There were there were some number of issues raised for potential changes. Some concern about whether transitions, regulations to establish near presidential areas are sufficient. As the committee knows, this was part of package, package A. Some feedback from the community about the, you know, street wall heights being lower versus higher, some next feedback on that. From the developers and consultants, I think feedback that there is a need for more flexibility and creativity in design and how variations, while carefully defined, can support or creative engineering design in the regional center and and feedback on site specific challenges such as clean conditions, others, which of course we as considered as part of package A or having another closer look again. From the consultants, there was again a feedback on the high rise built form, tower dimensions, separation, potential average averaging the the towers to allow for some smaller sites to be developed as those are those are challenging. Some tweaks to height and setbacks and the conform structures, how they will be treated under package B. We also heard, of course, in light of Halifax twenty fifty being approved, feedback about the integrated building design and what a central plan can do to facilitate that concern of a lightning, like lighting and potential for introducing measures for for track to prevent for track protection, for tracks in the dry and high risk development. Residents and community groups, again, similar to the practice of space concern that there's not enough open space and within proposed higher density developments and no no required parking dedication in the individual center, given that there was subdivision plans and this is subject to a term charter. And of course, as I mentioned, number of site specific requests, which will be which are including their correspondence and will be addressed in the staff report. Other issues that we heard about, of course, as we know, the impacts of COVID COVID are still emerging and may 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 not be fully clear for a number number of years. So so while there is some concern about, you know, is that the right way to go? Other issues relevant to economic economic development, making sure that the plan supports future economic recovery, provide some flexibility where needed, in particular for small retail, traditionally the commercial streets and 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 housing. Overall comments in terms of other chapters of the of the plan around culture and heritage, affordable housing, short term rentals, mobility and climate change, green city and climate change provisions, potential new policies in this area. Concerns of our parking and traffic and how to be managed and integrated with the integrated mobility plan and parking strategy. Again, lots of comments about investments in parks, open spaces and active transportation networks. Potential changes to a separate approval process and how meaningful this consultation as part of this this process. Implementation policies and transition policies to the plan, again, whether there will be additional timelines allowed for development agreements tabled prior to package A being approved in light of COVID. development agreements tabled prior to package A being approved in light of COVID. We always, again, some questions about bond zoning policies, in particular in data Halifax. And some some feedback about document organization in the the level of interactivity of the land is by law in particular, given the greater number of zones and we are again, looking at detailed look at that, have to make it even more user friendly and working with our IC department to to hopefully explore greater interactivity with the number of apps that we do have in the in the land just below. Okay, so in terms of next steps, today, of course, we tabled what we heard reports and staff are continuing to review and revise the applying documents and proceeding through internal internal review. We our target is to present the next, the next draft with the staff report to start the adoption process at the end of April, starting with this committee and moving through the various other committees and community councils and culminating in the committee of the whole regional council. And our goal continues to be to you know, anticipating public hearing either August or September, which again, will depend on the on the review process and number of changes requested by committees, council. And in terms of the proposed adoption path, which has been somewhat simplified from packaging, of course, the first, the first committees are C DAC and Heritage Advisory Committee, which provide for independent review of the plan and can provide recommendations directly to community planning and economic development, the committee of council. At the same time, all of the new councils also have opportunity to review the package and provide feedback as well as designer review committee, given their role in changes to the data Halifax and this below. All of these recommendations then culminate with a supplementary report. The committee of the whole can then direct changes to the plan and recommend changes to regional council. And after the plans are potentially adjusted, this can proceed to public hearing and then provincial review. So that's the that's the adoption process for central plan package B. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you very much for the attention, for your attention. I know it was a little longer than we'd unusual, but we felt we got lots of feedback, given the extensive communication process and we wanted to provide a thorough overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Kasia. Let's let's jump into the supplementary questions. So anyone that has some 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 questions for Kasia that on this presentation, now's the time. Wei Wei Mason, I see you have your hand up.
Isn't this nice that it has a little hand thing and everything? So good. So, you know, I just want to kind of go through what we've heard and give my perspective on on it. You know, I think the parks zoning is good and what the feedback we heard is good. The the regional center parks plan, I think that idea addresses, you know, some of the concerns we've heard and it would also help really solidify what the needs are, both in the zones where we're going to allow intensification by development agreement. You know, and and potentially farther north when we get to that point, looking up the Kent Road access, but I think that works for McMcMall in Dartmouth and for the Bragg lands, the Pierce's lands and that kind of thing. So satisfied with that. To to the committee, I'll say, you know, I found out a couple of months ago, only one university had responded. And so I took efforts myself to make sure all the universities were reached out to and and I believe that we've now had sufficient coverage with colleges and universities that I feel comfortable that institutional when it pertains to universities is fine and and certainly, you know, I I think the what's presented is an improvement. I feel like it's worth mentioning because there was a great deal of talking about the industrial lands and when it should and should not be kept. And that was a big piece in the regional plan. We talked about the the way it was put to us, geez, eight years ago, was it's easy to turn industrial lands into condos. It's hard to turn condos into industrial lands, right? And that the cycle of use and demand for industrial often is, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty year cycle that's out of sync with your residential development. So I I'm satisfied with, you know, with the exceptions like Dartmouth Cove, though I do think that we're going to have to continue to to argue that that the working waterfront part like Dominion diving should stay there. And I know that's not something that developed Nova Scotia or some of the stakeholders have agreed with, but but I but I don't want to sterilize that that those industrial uses out of those areas. So the main thing that I'm concerned about and I want to talk about a little bit is the 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 level of consulting around the potential changes in the established residential zone. Happy with the what I heard from Young Avenue. Interesting about the St. Pat site, because I feel like that's a very similar thing to Young Avenue. If you want a taller building, fix the entry cup building and build a taller building as a part of a DA is can't be more blunt than that, the people who bought that property, there is a mechanism for them to get closer to what they want. That doesn't involve, you know, allowing them by right to build tall buildings there. And and certainly what we saw is the community doesn't really support that either. So that leaves us with ER. And I just want to say, like, to go back to the March two thousand and seventeen document that we went to the public on, it says the principle is that established residential areas will accommodate growth through gentle density, meaning the addition of housing forms such as garden suites and secondary suites, which do not change community appearance and built character. And then when you get into the details of what were proposed, you know, there was a real strong dividing line between higher order residential and established residential areas. It talks again about on on page one hundred and twenty five of the of the document, it talks about established residential zones are lower order densities and largely characterized by detached homes, auxiliary dwelling units, secondary suites. And then when it gets into the details, it talks about townhouses and duplex and triplexes. It talks about housing conversions and garden suites and secondary suites. What what's interesting is it doesn't talk about allowing for unit build outs by right. So what's killing me in the ER zone is and how to relate this back to what we're talking about in terms of consultation is my read of it is, to be extremely blunt, is that the ER three zoning as presented in the first draft would result in teardowns on those corridors. So there's areas like like specifically Coburg with the intact Victorian that we didn't upzone on purpose. We took the HR's designation off of that where, you know, Coburg Coffee and towards St. Andrews and then Roby Street, south of St. Andrews, where where we didn't, we took the corridor or HR zone off of that because we didn't want teardowns and we didn't see that as appropriate. And I think the ER three zone where it allows up to four units would result in the smaller buildings, the smaller houses on those streets being torn down, probably not the biggest Victorians, because you can already convert them into four units. So I guess kind of where I've been at, the more I critique this and the more I look at it, the more I talk to folks is the ER two zone, I think, is too extensively applied. We've never said to the public that we were going to allow streets that are behind a corridor to be intensified, like Henry or Cambridge or anything like that. I think ER three is too intensive. If we want to upzone something, let's make it a corridor and HR zone. Like, we have a tool for that, but we don't need to like, like creating the ER three zone, I think, is 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 not right. I just, that's not what we've said to people that we would do. And and yeah, and 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 the way for people in the with the larger Victorians and those larger lots on, say, Roby across from the dentistry school or whatever, to get more rights is to register as a heritage building and do a heritage DA. So so that's my biggest concern. And to relate that, Mr. Chair, because you're probably wondering, when is he going to talk about what we've heard? And you would be right to do so, is I think that if it was put that plainly, if we did an analysis along these corridors where ER three has been applied and said, this is what potentially would happen in terms of teardowns and replacements, that the public would turn against them, right? I just don't think the public fully understands the potential there. And and I could be wrong, like maybe we could do an analysis and have a look at that. But but that's my, that's my view is I just don't think the public fully understands what ER three would potentially do on those that that it's creating corridors where we've already said we weren't going to do that kind of corridor change. And then my second issue, which I I think was was it distributed to the committee, my my critique of the overlay is I just don't think the public, if they look at the ER one and two, I think that people in 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 the detailed area plan areas in the South End are satisfied. If they look at the conversion being broadly applied across the entire area, regardless of lot size, regardless of house, when houses built, whatever, I think that they would be dissatisfied. I think that and I don't and so that all comes back to the fact that it's COVID and we couldn't have face-to-face meetings. And I was going to go out and do like eight or nine in in person meetings with walk and roll that got canceled because of the second wave and all that stuff. And I think you know, my summary is we could be okay if we walk a lot of that back. But if this comes to council, if it comes to the public as a draft that says we want to do these changes, I don't think we've had adequate consultation. Because I just don't think people understand the changes that had been proposed and may not be proposed in the future. I don't know. But I just wanted to really put a stake in the ground on that because because that's I would love to see this thing done and dusted in September, October. But I know if we go to the public and and it's still that broad that it's going to be an issue and it's going to slow us down. So I wanted to just throw all that out there. I'd love to have a discussion with the committee and with staff about that. Thank you.
Lindell, you had your hand up next. Do you, do you want to continue on with this discussion or or do you have something, another stream you want to get into?
No, mine's similar, but if if staff want a comment before I I add in, I think I'm not sure if they were going to or not.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. I think I think we've heard Council Masons and other concerns about the ER three zone. You know, extensively and and and, yeah, we're definitely taking it under consideration.
No, and thank you. So that was, you know, my, one of my biggest, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, as well as the regional conversions, I think, as well.
Okay, yeah, one of one of my biggest concerns, you know, looking at the the map or the tool online and you look at the ER threes and ER ones and ER twos is it does look like an extension of our corridor. So that could be read in in that way and it could also be interpreted depending on on, you know, the the site and et cetera. So that was that was a concern. And I'm happy that way brought up and I will have more discussions there. You know, I I have to give a big shout out to the your your team for the the details when it comes to appendix A that has the feedback and the staff responses and, you know, being real considerate with those responses. Some of them, you know, there's a few that honestly staff could have ignored, but I think it was important for, you know, that they they really made sure they responded to some. So, you know, I I want to give my appreciation to staff because understanding how extensive this work is and to look at every, everything that everyone has said and put it in a category and be able to to reference it is 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 great. So, you know, thank you. And it helped me catch some things that I wasn't really in tune to because it was organized in that way. So, you know, thank you for that. And, you know, what I what I also would say is, you know, looking at the special areas and the designations, you know, there's the North End special area and in in this West End and there's others, you know, those are are important. And I'm wondering, because I didn't see it in the feedback piece, I'm just wondering when you look at when have you gotten feedback specifically on those special areas from folks? Or has it been mostly just feedback that has been used to inform those special areas is what you've been getting. So I'm really wondering two things, if one, if you've heard from folks regarding a special areas just themselves, or if you're just taking all the feedback and if it's within a special area, using that to to inform any potential changes.
Thank you very much for this, Council Smith, and through the chair to the committee. We did, we did get some some feedback, both from proposed heritage conservation districts, which are sort of like special areas, but not in a different way. I guess, you know, the young avenues, of course, one that we heard a lot about, we heard a little bit in the North End, I think, I think some interest in I guess some feedback that some of the provisions were perhaps a little bit too too stringent or a lot of coverage, for example, reverting some coverage for small versus large lots. So, you know, that was taken. Perhaps removing the maximum height for some special area, which was lower than the eleven meters, that's more typical. I think only one special area in historic Dartmouth neighborhoods was interested in the lower heights, the nine point two meters to recognize their their context. So, yeah, there were definitely some tweaks and I think some interest in maybe lowering some of the lot areas and frontages and some areas recognizing small parcels. But I think overall, I think we're pleased because there are areas, neighborhoods with very large lots, like Young Avenue and others with a very small lots. So I think being able to continue that to recognize that versus having the average and the average size. So, okay, I definitely heard from some areas.
Great. In in the the last thing for me is the St. Pat's, you know, lots of lots of discussions around St. Pat's and and, you know, again, big shout out to staff for doing the best they could and and, you know, working with the community as best they could in the circumstances that we were faced to get that feedback. And, you know, from here, I'm wondering for that that discussion in particular, you know, you got the feedback, obviously, if people want us to communicate, they can. But what happens from from here? Do we wait until the draft, package B, the new draft comes out to have further discussion or how do you envision moving forward with that discussion?
Yeah, so we do plan to, we're actually hoping to schedule very soon a bit of a touch base, at least with the community stakeholders in the short term to present the will be heard report. And it will be heard and perhaps discuss some some options have to move forwards and of course, the property owners is also being being in touch with us, which we we haven't touched base recently, but, you know, we plan to. And otherwise, I think it will be until next next, you know, the next, the next draft would and, you know, council, of course, can still amend any potential changes. We do plan to communicate and share that there will be heard report. With the.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Chair.
Excellent, Dale. Dale, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. I both hands up. I want to thank Lindell for his comments that are, I echo completely about the hard work staff has done on this and thank you very much. It's been a hard go and you've made it doable that we can understand what's happening out there, even though we have such a limited ability to look at it. What I'm most interested in is the established neighborhoods, residential areas, and I agree totally with them. Way on, we can't, we can't subsume them under other designation. They they really don't understand, I don't think, exactly what this is going to mean. And I think it would cause a major uprising if we were to go ahead without making sure that they have a chance for not just input, but educated. So I thank you for your attention to that as we move forward. That that'll be an important part for me and as many others are. Success in this plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Any other comments on the on the presentation thoughts? I don't see any other hands up. Let me just take a quick look. No. Let me chime in as well. Certainly, you know, Wade's comments, I think, reflect, seem to reflect is is Dale and Lindell pointed out, kind of the longstanding opinion of the of the committee that 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 the proposals, particularly the ER three and ER two proposals, the established residential proposals. People haven't really clued in to what they entail, which would be, you know, essentially, you know, kilometer long or multi-kilometer long as of right infill development corridors, which, so if if approved in the in the current current plan, you know, it, you know, we'd see a tremendous number of teardowns with all the environmental consequences of that and and neighborhood destruction consequences and 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 people are, you know, and and I think part of it is, you know, there, you know, the you know, with COVID and so on, the spotlight just has not been on these changes. So my perspective as a committee member is 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 ER three or two in a current as a committee member is 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 ER three or two in a current form are just not going to fly with the public. There's just nowhere to go with them. And even even the ER one proposals probably likely, as we saw in, you know, in in the in the communication, needs some modification as well. So that's, you know, you know, that's seems to be the evolving opinion of the committee. I I don't know if anyone disagrees strongly with that. Certainly, please speak up if you do. But that seems to be where we're headed right now. And, you know, I'm just throwing this out there to provide some, you know, some some feedback to staff as they consider what's going forward on this this thing that the the things seem to be fall falling in place in a lot of areas. But the 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 established residential, which is a big issue, where, you know, the existing proposal just doesn't, it doesn't get us there. So the other, I think the other thing that and I talked to this with committee members offline. There there's a, I think, a sense that people would like to see more options. You know, we, you know, there are, you know, there was the option of neighborhood zoning that was discussed at a previous meeting. There are, there are many things like that that exist in other communities that we we could consider as part of the established residential package that would, I guess, allow more input at the neighborhood level to changes that are taking place in those in those neighborhoods. It it and it does seem what we're proposing, which is it's sort of a massive as a bright development going across a lot of established neighborhoods, just not going to fly. Anyway, I'll keep quiet. Any any further comments or any staff response on that? I'm just kind of, as I say, summing up what we've heard in this meeting and what we've heard over the last few, really.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. So I I think we we are hearing the concerns and we are, you know, looking at some significant changes to the ER, both the designs and where they are applied. I guess as staff, we still feel there maybe there is still some need for ER three zone to recognize areas where townhouse units, for example, were already permitted, where there could be potential. Then I've been, you want to jump in to say anything else, but we are, you know, definitely taking a hard look at all the sounds.
Any other thoughts on the on the on the other aspects of the presentation, this aspect? Don't see any hands, don't see any wave, any anyone waving. So that was the only item on our agenda today. So let me ask staff, do you have the feedback or that you're looking for? Are you, what, what can the committee do to to assist you going forward over the next few weeks as you as you work on this?
Well, I think I think Ben can feel free to jump in as well. But I I think I think the intent was to share, you know, in as much detail, both both summarize and also provide significant level of detail in what we heard. So I think we invite the committee to take a closer look as time allows and use the report that the feedback has presented to in the review, in your review of the next draft. And and, you know, I think I think we expect the committee to use the the reports and the detailed tables to ask questions about the next draft and to test whether we adequately address the the feedback received. So I think that's that's that same intent. But I think for now, I feel like we do have a lot of great feedback, both from the committee's previous meetings and and today. But Ben, feel free to add anything if I I missed anything.
Yeah. Thank you, Kasia, and thank you to the committee members through through Fred, through Fred and Chair, to the rest of the committee. Just I think Cash has covered it, covered it well. And thanks to the passion and the whole team to pivoting in this age of COVID and making sure we did get some great feedback and organizing it well on the tables. And I appreciate the committee's comments on on that. So as Kasia says, I think we're, I think we have received the the feedback and I think we have a sense of where to think where where some of the major changes are and are needed. And I think, as Cash mentioned, like we can expect some specific changes to the established residential policies and zones. And I mean, if you have community members have any last minute thoughts or concerns, I want to send our way. Those 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 can always be helpful, but otherwise it's time for us to put our head down and really get the the revised draft and go through our interim reviews with legal and other departments and and really present what we think will be a revised and robust draft for for you in in April.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sam.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't raise a hand. I can't seem to find that on the interface I have here. I don't know if it's doing this through browser versus downloaded or what. Just a very small observation from when I was going through it last night. I think it's just worth keeping in mind. I mean, I I appreciate that we all have the COVID situations that we have. And so it was good to see the high turnout in the survey. But the the idea that, you know, in that a virtual meeting, you know, trying to be an equivalent of an in person meeting just doesn't work. I mean, we had a very, very tiny response to those virtual offerings of, you know, trying to do a town hall basically in a virtual format. Whereas, I mean, you look back at Paky Jay, those same meetings, I mean, we had a hundred some odd people, I think, at pretty much every one of them. So, you know, barely maybe 15, 20% of what you would get in terms of attendance at a in person versus when you switch that format into virtual. So I think that's just, I just, that was something that struck me. And I think it's just something that we want to keep in mind as we move forward, especially for us at council, when presumably at some point along the line, we're going to be looking at a public hearing and whether how how we possibly can do a public hearing if that's the kind of the filtering off that occurs when you do things virtually. So just the just a thought for us all to mall. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. So thanks, everyone. I don't see any other hands up. I've I I guess one last thought, the the committee put a lot of its thoughts and and recommendations forward in a memo back in gee, I think it was, it might have been August, I suppose. Do do those points show up in the appendices that are that we that were sent as part of the package? Do they show up in there or are they a separate?
I don't believe all the detailed comments showed up in the in the appendices, but there's a reference to the committee's memo in the cover report. So it's recognized they received additional meetings feedback from the from the committee. And there was a, if there was a detailed staff response at that time initially, and and I think we'll be trying to address that in the staff report as well, how those were considered.
Yeah, I I was, I guess I was just thinking that the since the appendix, the appendix seems to be a the most comprehensive repository of information on this, it might be useful to kind of pour those those comments and and previous comments from from other meetings that came from the committee into those into those appendices. Often staff, you know, it's a it's a comment and staff have already had a response. So I think it's, it would be pretty easy just to pour that in there and put it, put it all in one place. Would that be possible?
We can discuss it with a clerk if we can adjust the reports. Or whether it could as a separate attachment. So the committee's full memo could be attached to the to the to the report. Perhaps that could be another option.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, make sure as as the public starts, perhaps starts focusing on this this effort that we that they catch all the ideas that are out there. So seeing no hands. Let me thank everyone for joining, joining in today. It's been really great to to get in public with this. And this this is a bit of a pilot using Zoom as opposed to Teams. And I think it went fairly well. I I encourage if anyone had any problems, just give some feedback to to the clerk. But it seemed pretty seamless to me. And this looks like something that we'll continue to do for the next little while. So thank you all. And and thank you to to staff for putting together this excellent package of, it's a lot of information and you know, like Sam, I got into the into the detail last night and really enjoyed the extensive detail that is in the appendix. And it's well worth a look at if everyone could do that. I think the other point that that Ben made is, you know, they got, you know, staff have their heads down and they've been they've been working hard for a long time, but they're going to be really working hard now, putting all this together. And now's the time that if 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 there are any thoughts that committee members want to make sure get in, now's the time. So as I said, you know, send Ben and Kasia a note to to flag wherever it is that you feel needs flagging. So thanks again. Next meeting is March 30th, same time, same Zoom format, I I assume. And I think we are adjourned. See you next time.